Councilmember Seaford. Okay, we have a quorum and we have a few members that will be stepping in in just a moment. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
We have one change under legal. Subsection D, Resolution Number Twenty, Twenty-three dash one seventy-five R. That is going to be pulled for the night. We had a last minute question about a legal description, so we won't be considering that for the night.
That's item D?
Yes.
Your D.
D as in dog?
The D as in dog, yes.
Okay, sorry.
One seventy-five R.
A thought.
Okay, alright, we'll pull that from the agenda. Otherwise, the agenda is approved as published. Uh, we have no presentations and awards, so we are going to begin with public comments related-
No, you have approval of minutes.
Oh, sorry, uh, approval of minutes. Number twenty-two-three dash zero eight dash R G.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Ready for vote. Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford. Okay, motion passes. Now, public comments related to agenda items. Each member would have three minutes to speak. So we are- Okay. Um, that was-
You're going.
Okay, uh, we have three minutes. Uh, each person that would like to speak can state their name and the district that they live in. State the agenda item that you will be commenting on. And just one note, we have a public hearing this evening, item twelve A regarding a retail liquor license, so please reserve any of your comments regarding that item, uh, until the public hearing. I have one comment card turned in on an agenda-related item from Gladys Williams.
Good evening, my name is Gladys Williams and I'm an employee with the City of Madison. While I agree that certain positions did merit a pay grade increase, I don't believe raising it by two grades is fair. We can all agree the city has grown quite a bit. We have more officers, which creates more tickets, which creates more work for records, which creates more work for us in court. Each one of us in the department has had an increased volume of work and we have handled it professionally and in a timely manner, even while being short-staffed for some of that time. If a pay grade increase is considered for some due to workload increase, it only seems fair that it should be considered for all in the department. The workload increase doesn't fall on the position being given the increase, but on us as magistrates. I can only speak for myself when I say that I am very hurt seeing that one position is being rewarded while their workload hasn't necessarily increased. I would ask you, you reconsider and instead of two-grade increase for the select few, give the department as a whole a one-grade increase, so that we all feel like valued employees. I also ask that you take into consideration a pay increase for translating. Those of us who are fluently bilingual save the city a good amount of money for translation services. In the past, we have paid an interpreter to sit in the courtroom all day in case there's a need for translation. If a call came in, language line was used. Being the only fluently bilingual employee in the department, I translate for defendants in front of judges. I assist defendants who do not know English fill out necessary paperwork. I handle all Spanish speakers at the window and answer all calls that require a Spanish speaker. I also assist other departments in the city if they need a Spanish speaker. I close by saying we all work hard to keep the city the best it can be. And it's obvious by the amount of people that are moving into the city that we are one of the best cities around. It would be nice for our salaries to reflect some of the increased revenue that's coming into the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Is there any other member of the public who would like to address an agenda-related item? Please come forward.
Margie Daly, District Six. Karen Denzine is my councilperson. So first, I do want to address, uh, twenty-two-three-one-forty-nine, which is, uh, expanding the city clerk's office to include revenue and the, um, the resolution in general. Um, I feel that we have a great bunch of employees here at City Hall. They're very good to the citizens, they work hard. I'm disappointed to just hear what I heard about especially somebody that's translating and working twice as hard with, uh, you know, different languages and stuff, that she has been left out of the, uh, that you increase certain people two grades and certain people nothing. I mean, I, I don't know how you're working that, but I think that all the employees here work pretty hard and, uh, we appreciate them. The citizens appreciate them and I would like to see them have a good work environment, which I think it is. You know, I'm here enough. And, uh, anyway, so I'd like to see them taken care of. And I want to make sure, especially the city clerk's office works so hard and they're such good professional, efficient people. I just wanted to say that. Um, another or, uh, resolution, twenty-two-three-one-fifty-six R, it's a drainage agreement. And, um, on last week, well, a few weeks, yeah, last council, I'm sorry, two weeks ago, we had this here, uh, in my neighborhood, the flood that happened from this construction site. It was caused by this construction site. I've been over there numerous times, I've taken pictures of the flood, how it flooded out the cemetery and then it went down portal and flooded out behind the train. And now we gotta go in there and fix it and we did a study with the, with the repair work. So I'm wondering, why didn't that construction site? Or was that purposely done? We purposely flooded the cemetery and, and, uh, ripped apart the culvert over there? I mean, what happened? And don't they carry insurance? I mean, they opened all new manholes and then they let that torrential rain go right in and flood our whole neighborhood. I mean, why aren't they responsible to pay for that? So I see we're doing an agreement now with insurance. We didn't have insurance to fix that, that the people had to pay? Uh, that's about all I have time for. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to address an agenda-related item? Please come forward. Seeing no one else, we will close public comments and move to the consent agenda and finance committee report.
The finance committee has reviewed all periodic and written bills to be paid and found everything to be in order. Oh, I'm sorry. Um, with that, I move to approve.
Second.
Motion in second, any discussion? Ready for vote. Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Presentation number four, speaking with Mayor Finley.
Okay, couple of things. One, mid-year budget is in the mayor's office. We are about to roll it up and then try to get real quickly with finance committee before we hand it officially off to finance committee. And so that should be done this week. Thanks again to all the department heads, a lot of hard work that went in there. It's a really good budget right now and, and definitely with the mid-year budget, um, some things that we're adding in there that make a difference. Uh, I'll just address on the high end and then we, I don't think we're gonna get too deep into the HR stuff tonight. Um, but in all of City Hall, we're analyzing, um, one, we're, we're, as, as we've had retirements, uh, an example would be with Cameron retiring. Um, we, we haven't the ability to make a change, um, that in turn, we've talked about for a long time, creating deputies. Uh, when we created two, there's a third one, which is the one that we're talking about in court, to bring them all in line as we've continued to look to do. And it's just the first piece of multiple pieces throughout the course of this year that we'll be looking to do to continue to take care of our employees and, and make sure that we're properly staffed. Um, addressing areas, um, of equalization, but also of, of concern that we, right now, are, are struggling to fill. Some, our jobs are, are, you know, we'll have sixty, seventy applications, some will have four. Um, it's a, it's a tough market right now. I guess we learned to do this, this month or this week, that we're the, uh, uh, have the lowest employment rate in the nation in this area right now. Um, so it's tough to continue to keep employees. One other thing along those lines that goes along with, uh, with what Gladys was talking about, we're also looking to reward, um, with steps as employees continue to do, um, things that better themselves and improve the city's ability to give services. Um, and that's a perfect example where we might, instead of, um, having a two-step increase, you, over the course of a three-to-four-year, uh, term within the city, you could have, um, three different steps, three different jobs that continue to stay, so if you, as you learn more experience, gain more certifications, create more value for yourself, but in turn our, our ci- our city to give to our citizens. So, great point that's made. We have to start someplace and tonight's where we're starting, we'll continue from there. Secondly, Madison Arts came to see me, uh, we had, in a follow-up to, uh, Rosalie coming in a couple of months ago, or a couple of meetings ago. Had a great meeting with them today. One of the things and reasons that Mary Beth talked today about, um, the murals, is that's one of the areas that they're looking at. And also, uh, they'll be announcing the summer concert series at Home Place Park this week. I know they've got four or five different concerts set up, uh, and a really good plan. So the Madison Arts continues to now, uh, gain steam and I think we'll continue to see, um, additional benefit from them in the weeks and months to come. With that said, that's all I have.
Thank you, District Number One.
Um, Mary, I have a question. We gave step increases, didn't we?
Oh, yeah, we gave a step increase, a cost, uh, cola.
Cola.
Uh, absolutely, and did not raise employees' insurance for the six, and all those were for the sixth straight year.
Right, and I think that's critical for everyone to know and to be reminded of, because there was, early on, we were not able to give step increases until we were able to get our budget in line. And so to be able to do that, I, I think speaks well of, of the value we have in our employees. Um, I attended a few things, want to welcome Ryan Brown to the, uh, I D D board. We had a meeting last week, um, had an opportunity to go and welcome Matt McCutcheon, um, as our new county commissioner and, um, am just so excited for the direction that our county commission is going in. And he's such a wonderful leader and so supportive of our community. And then along with mayor and Council President Bartlet and, uh, Councilmember Denzine, uh, went to the National Day of Prayer last Thursday. And it was just a wonderful way to start the day and, uh, am just so thankful and blessed for the community that we live in. And that's all I have.
Yes, your team.
Yes, also is at the welcome back Matt McCutcheon, um, reception. And it is wonderful to have Matt back in, in this area. He brings a wealth of knowledge from the ins and outs of how things work down in Montgomery. He's already got some plans on how to, um, work on getting some, um, funding for different projects that are in dire need in this area. He, um, is just, is, he's highly respected in Montgomery and to have him as our commis- county commission chair in Madison County speaks well for our future. Um, also, on Saturday, um, I was, I saw the mayor over at the Madison CEO, um, trade show. And that is Madison City Schools has a program called Madison CEO. And they have each student develop the business plan and start the business. And these students, there were ones that were baking bread, there was a lady that was making these gorgeous blankets. There was somebody who was doing, um, gym attire, somebody had backpacks that they designed for different travel or school or the gym. There was, um, one student, um, awesome wife, and he had a consulting business to help you, if you were a senior in high school, apply for college and, uh, for scholarships. And I thought, where were you a few years ago? But to see the depth of knowledge that our kids had and their ability to speak to the product that they had designed, and they knew exactly how much it cost, they knew how much profit they were gonna make on each item, they knew how many they had to sell to break even, they knew every detail of the plan. And so it was just amazing. I am so thrilled about the future of our country, seeing what's going on with our students. And on that note, I hope to be quiet.
Thank you, District Two.
No new business.
District Four.
No new business.
Six.
Yeah, I'd also like to speak about the pro breakfast the other day. There were six hundred and forty-fourty, six hundred and forty-four individuals who all came together to just remember that we are our community. It doesn't matter what faith we are, we can all come together and work together in a way that is respectful to each other. And I really appreciated being at that pro breakfast and the, uh, just the ha- the feeling I had leading, that we were truly a community. Um, also, I would like to encourage all citizens to vote tomorrow. It's your voice, it's your choice. There has been so much said in the la- in the previous weeks. So tomorrow is your time to come forward and say whether you want to change our form of government or not. It's your call. I obviously will respect whichever way it goes and works and whichever way needs to happen going forward. But I am looking forward to our people, our city, saying what they want. And I think it's great how many people have really gotten involved. And I hope that even after this happens, everyone will stay involved and continue to watch what it is that we do up here and continue to hold us accountable. And on the last note, May fifteenth is the graduation for our high school students. It's an exciting time for so many families. Um, I just want to congratulate all of our students for, um, for getting through all these years and learning so much. And I am just so proud of our high schools and all that they do. And on that high note, I will end my, end my little silicones for the evening.
District Seven.
No new business.
Okay, first, I have a resolution number twenty-two-three-dash-one-seventy-dash-R, authorizing video recording archiving of the live stream work session that we held at five o'clock this evening.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion in second, any discussion? Ready for vote. Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
And motion passes. Um, then I have just a few reminders. Well, first, a thank you to the mayor for meeting with me and Bradford Farms H O A members, uh, this morning. Appreciate you doing that very much. I want to extend congratulations to Chief Gandy, who graduated from Leadership Class Thirty-six. Uh, that was a nine-month program and he represented Madison very well. A couple of announcements. Uh, Tuesday, May sixteenth, at noon, we will be canvassing the ballots filed at special election here in council chambers. And then on Wednesday, May seventeenth, we have our monthly regularly scheduled work session, but this time it will start at six-thirty because we have reserved the council chambers for a preschool graduation, uh, at five-thirty. So we'll start an hour later than normal and it will also be livestreamed. And that's all I have. Alright, we have no board committee or appointments this evening and we have one public hearing. Uh, public hearings will be limited to five minutes per speaker, uh, after we, uh, get the initial presentation. And I believe that we've seen this before, is that right, Cameron?
Yes, ma'am.
So tell us what, why we're seeing it again.
The reason we're here tonight, uh, Jay, uh, Jogney Incorporated doing business of Balch Road Spirits, um, as you, you mentioned last time. They're located five thirteen Balch Road Suite A. The application that came to us had Suite B on it. So, uh, the A B C board caught it and here we are, everything's still in order.
Okay, so now with the correct address, um, we're gonna open up the public hearing. Is there any member of the public who would like to address the council? Seeing none, we will close public hearing. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, two motions in two seconds. Um, let's give him the motion and give, uh, Marah the second. Is that alright?
Sure.
Okay, ready for vote. Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you, Cameron.
Cameron.
Cameron, will this be your last presentation before us, before you retire? I just want to thank you so much for your service to the city. You've always been excellent.
Thank you, Cameron. Department reports, engineering.
I just have one item tonight, it's Resolution Number twenty-two-three-one-fifty-six R. This is authorizing a professional services agreement with S and M E for environmental consulting services to develop an A D M required monitoring program, uh, and revising the stormwater, uh, monitoring program plan in the amount of nine thousand three hundred fifty dollars to be paid from Stormwater User Fee Fund.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion in second, any discussion or questions? Okay, seeing none, ready for vote. Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember, Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Fire and rescue.
Good evening, this is just the first reading for proposed ordinance twenty-two-three-one-fifty-three. Amending the city's fire code as adopted in chapter eight of our, our city statutes. So whenever the, uh, state adopts a new addition, we have to by state law anyway. And we're gonna clean up some, uh, some language as well. Our fire marshal's office and the, and the, uh, city attorney's office have been working on this for a while. So if you have any questions between now and the next time, please get with myself for the fire marshal.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Human resources.
Good evening, I'd like to request your consideration for Resolution Number twenty-two-three-one-forty-nine R to authorize changes to the city's job classification plan. The first two items, which are the deputy city clerk treasurer and deputy city clerk license and revenue officer position changes from grades ten to grade twelve, have to do with the upcoming merger of the city clerk department and the revenue department, which is happening upon the very sad occasion of Cameron's retirement. So we'll miss Cameron greatly, but this is also an opportunity to merge these two smaller departments and keep those treasury functions under one umbrella of the city clerk department. And so those are proposed for going from grades ten to grade twelve with the extra supervisory responsibilities that both of those roles will take on. In addition, as the mayor mentioned earlier, we are proposing that the deputy court clerk be moved up from a grade ten to a grade twelve because she has similar supervisory and management duties within the department, as well as about thirty years of service to the city. So we do think it's appropriate and we have consulted with her department head, um, on this change. And so we would like to propose that so that we can keep all of those deputy positions on an even level. Do you have any questions about the city clerk or revenue functions before we move on to the last item? Okay, and the final item is requesting your approval for the creation of a new department head position, which will manage the city's ever-growing list of facilities and grounds. Uh, this job has already been created within the city's service, um, under the building department and we advertised last year, but didn't really find the best fit. But given that the list of responsibilities keeps growing and growing, we'd like to propose making this its own department. So we're proposing that this position come out of the general class plan of the city to the unclassified portion of the class plan, which houses the city department heads.
Okay, can I have a motion in a second? Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion in second, any questions?
Give one, a little bit more information. When we went to the deputy department heads, this, uh, there's large departments and smaller departments. The large departments, um, de- deputies are at fourteens right now. Um, this would, um, take the medium-sized departments, smaller-sized departments, and make them twelves. In each case, whoever's the deputy, um, is responsible for that respective department, the department head's gone. They attend, department head meetings when there's vacations. So it is an elevation in responsibility for each one of those resp- respectful jobs. And we're just trying to equal them all out based on size and responsibility.
Thank you.
So we voting all three of these at the same time?
Yeah, all together.
Yep.
Right. Okay, any other questions? Alright, ready for vote. Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, Cameron.
Thank you.
And legal.
Good evening, um, legal has prepared Resolution Number twenty-two-three-dash-one-six-three R. This is a bit of a cleanup. Um, um, basically council for Smart Living LLC realized that they had failed to, uh, transfer or to dedicate over a right-of-way to us, uh, a few years ago. Basically, it's a small tract of land over by, um, uh, Kaiser Boulevard and it's been cleared out. But what we're asking council to do is to accept the dedication of that tract of property along Kaiser Boulevard from, uh, Smart Living LLC for the city's right-of-way.
Can you have a motion in a second?
Move to approve.
Okay, motion in a second, any questions?
So where, what's this property with?
Do we have a-
I'm a little confused. Yeah, you have a picture?
And, and I apologize, I just realized I didn't bring a picture. But this is a, a small tract, a little trapezoid, less than an acre, cleared tract, uh, next to Bradford Farms, you know, not Bradford, uh, Bradford Station.
It's near those townhomes, right, off Kaiser?
It's, it's on the, by the townhomes of Kaiser. Is this along the railroad track or is this along the road?
This is along the road.
Okay. So it doesn't have to do with the development, the one in a couple of years ago?
From, from what I understand, it, it's basically right there along the road adjacent to it, just a clear, uh, and again, I apologize, I should have had a map with y'all.
Mary Beth, does this help us with, uh, what we need for the greenway that's gonna go down through there? It's just autonomous from that, just something he's gonna give. Can we, I mean, is there a requirement to do it quickly? Could we table this and bring a map for the next meeting?
And I apologize for not having it.
You guys would have an idea what that is? I don't think there's any hurry for it.
And the concern is, I know there was a sidewalk there that needed to be put in. We'll make sure that all that's been taken care of.
Exactly.
That's, that's my-
It was in the agenda packet, right?
Right, and-
Yeah, it was in the- But it has that description.
Yeah.
And all we'd say in addition, obviously I want it, want y'all to, you know, have an informed vote. But, uh, we did discuss with engineering, there was no additional, um, anything additional that they had to do for the dedication. So we did clear with engineering, but I'm, do apologize, but I'd be happy to.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine to go forward. I just, I just need to know if it's, it, it, it's not gonna affect the agreement we have.
No, no, no.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine.
Okay. Alright, we have a motion in a second. Has everyone seen the map that needs to see map for?
It, it, it's not a map as much as it's a description area.
Why do we want the right-of-way?
Why do we want? Oh. It's a benefit of any way taking it other than us mowing it. Why do we want, I mean, just 'cause they wanna give it to you, something we need it?
Let's just engineer, yeah, let's, let's table it, maybe.
We'll, we'll table it.
I mean, I know where it is, I just don't understand what the benefit for us is other than mowing it.
Well.
Good point, I didn't think-
I mean, really, I mean, what are we gonna do with it?
I don't know.
Doesn't help anything. Does that help us in any way?
No, we don't have a legal description.
Well, uh, we'll table it and we'll, uh, I apologize for not giving you enough information on it.
Okay, so I need a, we have a motion in a second right now on the floor, so I think I'm gonna need a motion to table, uh-
I'll move to table it to-
The next meeting?
Next meeting?
Yes.
For the next meeting.
Okay, so let's, let's take a vote on a motion to table this particular item until the next meeting. Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Okay, motion in second.
Next, we have a Resolution Number twenty-two-three-dash-one-sixty-dash-R. This is, uh, authorizing a permissive use agreement where, uh, Huntsville Utilities is allowing us to use their property at no cost, uh, near the, uh, the horse chapel out there, I mean, I'm sorry, the horse farms that mows Chapel Road. Basically, this would give us additional, uh, property out there that we could extend if, you know, whatever plans that we might finalize as far as for the horse farms. And this is being provided, the permissive use, uh, open-ended from Huntsville Utilities, basically until we, you know, for us to determine what sort of use we need. Right now, I think we've posed, uh, a potential use for, for maybe some sort of a, uh, disc, whatever they call it, disc course or whatever. Yes. And, uh, but obviously nothing's been approved or anything, but basically, under those discussions with Huntsville Utilities, they were willing to give us this free permissive use agreement.
Okay, do you have a motion in a second?
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any questions?
They had this property for the possibility of having a substation at some point. They don't need it right now, it's directly adjacent to this property. And we simply asked, can we use it until you might need it? And they said yes.
Okay, ready for vote. Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next.
Next, uh, I was asked to prepare Resolution Number twenty-two-three-dash-one-sixty-nine R. This is for approval to move election officers to a different polling location for the special election to be held on May ninth, twenty-twenty-three. Last time we met, we had a very specific list of, uh, election officials and we've had a bit of a, uh, circumstance, I believe, with one of them that had to be reshuffled. Uh, statute just requires that this body, that it authorized them. Uh, statute just requires that this body, that it authorized them. So we want to take this last chance to shuffle them back around to, to where they would be. If you need any additional information as far as who's moving, where, uh, clerk would be able to answer. But that's the only purpose of this, is just to make sure we have proper authorization for everyone prior to the special action.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. And Lisa, have there been any other changes besides what you initially anticipated?
Um, no other changes. We do, this morning we learned that one worker, um, is out, well, may be out ill. But, um, she's not sure if she will be available to come tomorrow. They might just isolate her and, you know, she's still functional as far as we know. But that's the latest development that we've had.
Okay. You have enough people for that particular location?
They can manage.
Very good. Okay, ready for a vote? Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And the next matter, uh, legal had pulled that for the night, so we'll ask for consideration at May twenty-second for that matter.
Okay, thank you.
That's a map.
There you go, planners love maps.
It was a map.
Um, don't go anywhere without a map. Uh, this is proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash one thirty-seven. And this is to convert a portion of an open easement to a utility and drainage easement. You may recall from your last meeting, this is a new subdivision off of Royal Drive. And you can see that red line there that runs along the, where the back of the homes will be. And, uh, the open easement is because of a floodplain. Um, as this project was kind of going through development, Madison Utilities determined that they needed an extra ten feet for, um, their wet utility easement, which means all the development has to shift a little bit further to the east. Um, and the units have to have fences in their backyard for the code. You can't put a fence in an open easement, but you can put a fence in a utility and drainage easement. You do so at your own peril, but you can do a fence in a utility and drainage easement. And so as a result, we want to convert that five-foot strip to utility and drainage easement. Asking for your approval this evening, all of the, um, utilities and city departments have signed off.
Need to approve. Second.
Okay, motion in a second, any questions? Ready for a vote? I heard two seconds. Teddy and Connie. No, that's fine, sorry. Ready? Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Motion passes. Your next item is proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash one fifty-seven. And this is for a vacation of a portion of utility and drainage easement. This is, uh, at the corner of Huntsville Browns Ferry and Oakland Church, which is the, um, primary entrance into the new Bella Woods subdivision on the north side of Huntsville Browns Ferry. They're, um, asking for the vacation easement for their monument sign. They had planned to put their, um, entrance monument sign on the other side of the street and had planned for that. However, um, there ended up being a conflict with some utilities that got shifted. So now they need to put their entrance, um, sign on this side. So this is just a first reading, we'll be back at your next meeting asking for approval. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, uh, citizens, resolution twenty twenty-three one sixty-six dash R, authorizing an agreement with Renegade Fencing for installation of the perimeter fencing at the Kids Kingdom Playground in Dublin Park in the amount, not to exceed eighty thousand. Um, we're putting, it looks like, oh, black wrought iron fence around there. Um, we put this project out for bid and received no bids. And we're fortunate to get a company that would actually talk to us and do this project.
Need to approve. Second.
Okay, motion in a second, you got them? I got them. Any questions? I just have one question, I, a lot of the trees were taken down that I was surprised to see. Are we going to be planting more mature trees?
Well, we're bringing in ten-foot, um, double the trees that were taken out. Um, actually, our, our arborist was up there today and, you know, just talking with him, I think out of the sixteen we took down nine were struck by lightning.
Okay.
And we were keeping them alive on tree steroids, I didn't know there was such a thing, but he, uh, he's been trying to keep them alive.
Things you learn at a council meeting, right?
Trees are juiced up.
Yeah, I'm glad I asked, well, that, that's encouraging, twice as many are coming in. Okay, any other questions? All right, ready for a vote? Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
She just likes me more.
Apparently.
Maybe, maybe, but that means I have to work more because you never get anything.
Get you on the next, you're next.
Uh, second item is resolution twenty twenty-three one sixty-seven dash R, authorizing an agreement with fireworks shows for the Independence Day Celebration Fireworks Show in the amount of fourteen thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars.
Need to approve.
Second. Okay, motion in a second. Okay. Any questions? Ready for a vote? Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye. She just likes me more, John.
Thank you.
Thank you Cory.
Thank you Cory.
Okay, now we are at the part, at the meeting for additional public comments. Each speaker will have three minutes, need to state your name and the district. Uh, we have one comment card that has been turned in and that is from Bernadette Mayer.
Good evening, I forgot my glasses, so I'm. No, I'll be okay. Um, so I'm Bernadette Mayer, I'm in District Five, I live in Heatherwood subdivision. Uh, I'm going to first start with something I've talked with on before, uh, about, um, some of the planning periods. When everybody keeps shooting for Madison, I'm tracked twenty forty-five. And, um, the thing, I think that there needs to be some closer projections because, um, some of these estimates to me seem really off. And you really want to have, you work on the needs that are more current and talking about time value of money. And so when you have a use of bonds and use of budget and planning, and you want to be able to efficiently use things that are within periods of time. And, you know, I keep hearing about, oh, Madison's still growing so much. Well, right now, if we're about sixty thousand, we're going to grow to seventy-two thousand. We had a whole lot of more growth in past periods. So that's just something that I think, especially when talking about moving up the school year and all this kind of thing, that, um, and even with population growth, what, what are those population needs going to be for the city, city schools? You know, that, to me, it, we're, I don't know, to me, things are just a little bit, um, you know, out of line on that. So, um, item number two, um, planning dovetailing with finance. I think there's sometimes, it seems that we don't have control on the needs of city infrastructure and current with planning debt paydown. And it seems that the city has been trending to quick development. Um, but I do applaud you for really questioning that science proposal because I do see that wasn't well put together yet in the planning session. So, um, uh, and, and my concerns with that also were the fact that there's McWayne Center and other center, science centers, so many science centers. Um, so anyhow, um, item number three, um, was, uh, the, you know, really the, the plan for debt paydown in future budget periods. And one of the things I saw, okay, we, we've been working, I guess, on a sixty million dollar budget plan and three of the different, Mass and four people in news media were talking about an eighty million thing lap for next year. And, and, um, the, uh, letter to the editor talking about seventy million, uh, a budget plan for next year, which is, you know, a sixteen, a little bit over sixteen percent increase over this year. So I just, how, how that stuff is all moving, um, will there be a schedule for some kind of yearly paydown even if it's graduated, whatever? And I'm not going to get to all my points, but, um, you have my comment card.
Thank you, Ms. Mayer. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please state your name and district.
Margie Daly, District Six, Karen Denzine is my councilperson. So I got a couple of things to speak about. First of all, we're having a lot of problems reading the, uh, agenda packets. The links are broken. I also get emails from the city where the links are broken. We need to fix that. The maps that are you putting online, if they're not, uh, readable, then they're not public, uh, you know, availability. So I'm wondering why we purchased this super-duper copy machine back in, end of last year from Canada, not made in the USA, and yet we still can't read the street names on the maps. Okay, Parks and Recs, bids. There are never any bids given to Parks and Recs. What's going on here? Maybe it's where we're advertising. I'd like to know what kind of trees, I know the arborist and I know that he's, um, volunteer or he was. I don't know if we've hired, uh, an arborist since then. But, uh, so I, I know he's good too, so I'm not going to question it, but we don't know what kind of trees are going in Dublin Park. Okay, and then I wanted to talk about Home Place Park. I wanted to, uh, thank the mayor for allowing us to have our little thing at Home Place Park. Um, it was very nice, there's only one thing, you know, I thank you guys for that. But there is one thing I must say, I could not, could not believe the amount of dog feces there. Why isn't anybody cleaning up that park? I mean, you couldn't step anywhere without stepping in it. And it's so cute and nice and I'd like our city to take care of it. Okay, so this, this morning at ten-thirty, we had a news interview. It was just that they were interviewing myself. So since we had numerous, uh, Madison Forward interviewed in front of City Hall, I didn't think there would be a problem. But we, uh, Samantha came out and she's like, you've got to move, you've got to go, go, fifty feet. We weren't doing a protest, we have more respect, and you should realize that because, you know, the election is tomorrow. So there was no need to think we were going to start a protest the day before the election. We're busy working, trying to get our no vote out. Um, then the fireworks. Understand, there are a lot of people in this community with PTSD and animals freak out with these fireworks. Now, every year I go away on Fourth of July because of my dogs, I take them with me to Florida because we, you know, we're right by Dublin Park and it's just too much. But I, I would like the city to consider people also and animals on the Fourth of July, that the fireworks don't need to be bombing fireworks.